The time is 7:31. I call the September 16th meeting of Yardley Borough Council to order. Please stand for the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
Roll call, please. Manager Johnson?
Mr. Carlson?
Present.
Mr. Stump, Ms. Thompson?
Present.
Ms. Shear?
Present.
Ms. Siegel-Morris?
Present.
Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
And Mr. Finer?
Present.
The six members present, we have a forum of council and we may proceed. We'll start with community announcements. This is the portion of the meeting where members first from the table and then from the public can tell us about upcoming community events happening in or around the borough.
Yes, may I?
Please.
There's a little event happening on Saturday called Yardley Harvest Day, taking place in a, just to be clear, in a new location for this year, north, the north side of Main Street, towards, oh gosh, I always, Buttonwood Park area and Buttonwood Drive and extending into the, and I want to thank St. Andrews for letting us use some of their property as well. But be prepared for the change of location between 10:00 and 5:00 p.m. I want to thank Acting Chief Golden and those on the, working with us to make sure that everything that we planned will go successfully. And seems like we have a solid plan and things will be, it'll be a great day. No rain in the forecast, and even if there was, I wouldn't say it. So, thank you. And just one other thing I did-
Knocking on wood over here.
What?
I'm knocking on wood over here.
Oh, thank you. And all, yeah, I just, I left the Yardley Business Association to let you know that they're working really hard on plans for the Beer Fest, October 18th, Saturday, and other, and coordinating for other events later in this year. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other community announcements from the table first?
I have a letter I received. Would this be where the place to read that?
Sure.
Okay. Councilman Stump and I received this letter, but since he's not here, I said I would read it from residents. It says, "To whom it may concern, my wife Louisa Flanningham and myself, Paula Brzezowski, live at 106 South Main here in Yardley. We had been away for a few days, and when we were returning home and driving through town, we noticed signs saying 'Save Our Police.' We had no idea what that meant, and neither did a few of our neighbors. We are celebrating our 30th wedding anniversary today, and it was a toss-up between coming to the town meeting tonight or having a romantic dinner. Hard call, but we chose the dinner. We are in favor of keeping our own Yardley Borough police force. They have come to our rescue several times. They were at our house within a minute to help both my wife and myself when we needed them. Their presence on Main Street by the firehouse makes us feel safe and secure. We wonder how many burglaries have been prevented because of their all-around presence. The question is, why would we not want to have our own police force? This is too big of an issue to have a few people vote on it. If you want to get rid of our police, then the 2,600 people who live in Yardley should have a chance to be informed and have a say in the matter. Put a referendum on the ballot so people can have their voices heard. This is too big of a decision to have only a few well-meaning town council members vote." That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other community announcements this evening? Does anybody from the public have any upcoming events you'd like to share with council? Yes, ma'am. Oh, Dr. Prohmutter, we'll go with you first, sorry. Yes.
I would just like to say that anybody in Yardley that would like a 'Save the Yardley Borough' police sign, they are available for free. Just go to the Ship and Print, leave your contact information, and they will be brought to your house and put on your lawn. Thank you. At 25 South Main Street, Ship and Print.
Ms. Corsi, please.
Charlie Corsi, 195 South Canal Street. In this community announcement, I'm wearing my other hat, conservator and director of Gather Place at the old AME Church, South Canal. I'm happy to say this is our first official year to have a table at the Yardley Harvest. We're very happy. My team and I have put together a book for children, The Story of Yardleyville, and it's a coloring and history book. And I know, I did a little research, there's only a few books, I think, written by Yardley residents. Councilman Shear has one, Alfalfa the Duck, right? And, of course, 1999, or those, the new to Yardley, we call it the picture book, Images of Yardley, that's very good. And I found out that Linda Jacobs at the Yardley Friends, she's a chef, and she wrote a book about being a chef. So I'm happy to say, now we have a new book. This is our first draft, self-published. We will be looking for a publisher eventually, but it's going to be available at Harvest Day, and I do want to give a few copies out, because I think we need to celebrate happiness in Yardley.
Ms. Johnson has a grandchild.
Yes, thank you.
And I want you to, you're, you're-
Thank you.
-your little kids. Anybody else have grandkids? I know yours is a little older, but I want to-
Or he wants to read it, though.
Yeah, well, they'll, they'll be available for donation-
Oh, this is great.
-at our table, Gather Place, and we're happy to have our table. And I want to thank, a part of our team is Martha Allen. She's our illustrator and artist, and the history, it's a history book and a tour book that we helped write, putting together some of the resources, like, so I wanted to have a book for our children. So, come look for us at the Harvest Day table, and we'll take your donations. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I didn't see any other hands for community announcements. Oh, please.
The Third Annual Yardley Fest for the Vets is on Saturday, October 4th, from 11:00 to 4:00, at Knoll's Doyle Legion down the street. So, please come out and support our vets.
Excellent. All right. We'll now move on to public comment. This is the portion of meetings where a member of the public can approach. They can state their name and whether or not they're a Yardley Borough resident. And please keep your comments to three minutes per topic. Any public comment this evening? Mr. Goldstein first, and then Mr. Markey next.
So, Jason, that's fine, but I appreciate Mr. Goldstein. I'm a borough resident, and I live on Pennsylvania Avenue. And since I've moved in, there's a property at 128 Pennsylvania Avenue that appears to be abandoned. As I've spoken with several neighbors, they've talked about people going with hazmat suits, kids going in there partying and drinking, lawns overgrown. And so, really, they were wondering, you know, is there anything the council or the borough can do about that? And so, I thought about bringing it to the council's attention, if there's anything that could be done. And it doesn't look like anybody lives there either.
Thank you. So, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I know that the property is still owned, and they still intend to keep ownership of the family of the old owners. And obviously, there's ordinances around length of grass that can and are enforced, perhaps. Not, it's not cut as regularly as it should be, but in terms of the partying and things, that's certainly something that we can look into. And yet, anyone have any other comments? You can-
Is this greenhouse?
Um-
Used to be green.
Used to be green.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have been in touch with the owners. The doors were open with the police department. They were able to secure it so that people should not be getting in there anymore. So if there are, then one neighbor usually calls us right away. As for the grass, we do contact the owners constantly. They are living, I want to say, down south somewhere. So, they do have to hire somebody to come up here, but ultimately, they need to do their job. Yeah.
All right.
We are on it constantly.
All right. And then, just one other one. On 138 Long Shore, a couple of residents talked about this grate along the curb that seems to be not a grate, and potentially, you know, maybe some kids could, you know, trip over it or fall into it or something like that. So, again, just wanted to bring it to the council's attention. Not sure if there's anything that could be done, but like I said, a few people on the street brought it up to me.
And Mr. Goldstein, if you'd like to follow up your public comment with an email so that Manager Johnson knows who to contact with updates on these matters, that would be very helpful to us. Mr. Finer, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just thinking, this, you know, this happens in communities. I know, I spoke to some of the people in the neighborhood as well, and the sense I got is the grass is not cut regularly, you know, and like, it's not being kept up. And I think what happens is there, for whatever reason, the owners are holding on to it, but not letting go of it yet, not maintaining it, and that's affecting the neighborhood. So, my thoughts are, it reminds me of the rooster thing we had, like, a few months ago, and when we finally pursued it with using their existing ordinances, we were able to, you know, solve that issue. That maybe, could we ramp up the level of, you know, violations when they don't meet ordinances? What do we have that we can use that we're not fully utilizing before maybe we need to consider more ordinance? But it's always better to use what we have. So, the question is, could, you know, could we check it more regularly? And then, maybe there are residents there that would let us know if there are kids, like, partying, like, you know, they should, breaking in. That's actually, like, that's a form of breaking and entering. That's a serious crime, right? So, that we could ask, unless we were driving by, we wouldn't know. But the grass thing, I'm just wondering if that's one to maybe make better use of, or, you know, any thoughts?
Which we do. We, whenever our code enforcement officer drives around and sees it, he does act on it. He actually just sent out seven citations to one property yesterday, I think it was, when he was here. And that was some, somebody up on Cadwalter Court, I think it was, that's not maintaining the property. So, yeah, we are acting the best way we can. Sometimes we just have absentee owners, or there are flippers that are just waiting to redo the house, and then it sits there, and it's not fair to the neighbors either. So-
Yeah, I'm not sure if the escalations of our weed ordinance are the same as our noise ordinance, which is what was used for the rooster. So, I don't know if there is a money component that can be leveraged, but we could certainly look into that.
And if not, maybe it's something to look into revising on our end, make sure there's, like, escalation ability in there. Otherwise, we're just redoing the same $100 fine or whatever each time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Read it. Mr. Markey, please.
Good evening. My name's Earl Markey. I'm a borough resident. I'd like to address the police transition nonsense, I call it this evening. I think that it's pretty undemocratic, if you ask me, to have a council appoint a committee that is only meeting less than 100 days before the next election. We're going to have a new mayor. We're going to have a number of new council members, regardless of which party wins. And I think you should dissolve this committee and let the new council figure out the police department problem. That I think will bring the certainty that the department needs in the time being. Let them get settled. Let them figure out how they want to proceed. And I might ask as well, do the members who are, like, Mayor Harding, who's obviously going to finish his term, is he going to remain on the committee? Or is the new mayor going to be on the committee? How's that going to work? I don't think council has, they've appointed individuals, have they appointed them as officers or individuals? I suggest, again, just dissolving it. Let's stop this nonsense. Let's have the election. Let the new mayor, the new council, figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other public comment this evening? Dr. Prohmutter?
When Council Caroline, President Caroline Thompson created the Yardley Borough Police Transition Committee, she unilaterally appointed members and made herself chair without a vote from council. To correct the situation, council members held interviews and voted on members of the committee. Tonight was the first meeting of that committee. Through a right-to-know request, I obtained an email from Caroline Thompson showing that once again she invited and appointed another member to the board without council voting. She had the audacity to personally select and invite a Yardley Borough police officer to represent the Yardley Borough Police Department on the committee, completely ignoring the department's chain of command and her fellow council members. Chief Golden, she went around him, assigned one of his officers, and in this email told the chief to make certain he pays the officer for the extra duty work. As usual, Thompson does not understand that her role as chair of this commit, of the committee and as president of council is primarily procedural, to preside over meetings. You do not have any direct operational authority over the police department, and have no concept of the chain of command, and you're continuing to undermine Chief Golden's command. Police officers do not report to you. They report to the chief of police. You do not jump over the chief and disrespect the entire council by unilaterally inviting an officer on this board. You're not the chief of police. You're not the boss of the other council members, and you're not the CEO of Yardley Borough. By making yourself the sole decision-maker, you're discriminating against other officers by not giving them the opportunity to be on the board. By putting Corporal Clark, you put him in an untenable position. He knows he's supposed to report to the chief, not you. It also creates a number of other issues. It's my understanding that Corporal Clark is the union rep. So, now you've invited the union rep to be on the board, and they have certain rules. It's a civil service position. There's a lot of questions about how people are appointed and regulations for discriminating against officers who may have wanted to apply. And if you're inviting the union rep, you probably should have to have Chief Golden at every meeting, because then he's representing the administrative portion. So, I'm asking council to do, to do what they had to do before and correct what has happened, and allow other officers the opportunity, they may want to be the representative, and then to have the whole council vote on it, and not just another unilateral decision. Thank you.
Dr. Prohmutter, Chief Golden was asked by me who he would like to be on the committee, and he provided Corporal Clark's name. Does that change your statement at all?
I spoke to Chief Golden about that prior to this meeting, and that's not what I was told.
Well, that's interesting, because I asked him who should be on the committee, and he said Corporal Clark, because he's head of the civil service. And then he was asked the same day.
Well, regardless, the council has to vote on it.
Council voted that we would have a, one member of the police force on the committee. That's what we voted on.
I have the email. The email is from you, and you make it look like you're Mother Bounty Fuller and going to pay him for his overtime.
Release the email. Release all of, all of the documents that you have referenced in your public comment. You have an email list that you like to email.
Why don't you release the documents?
Release them.
Why do I have to do right-to-know requests? Why are you always hiding everything?
You've already collected them all up. Release them. Anything damning about me, you have released to the public. You haven't released these documents because they aren't damning. I have not said or done anything wrong.
I just pursue them and-
Please, release the 17-page letter. Release all of my emails, and let the public decide. Thank you, Dr. Prohmutter.
Why don't you be transparent?
Any other public comment this evening?
Stop hiding everything.
Any other public comment this evening? Yes, Mr. Hofelder, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Chief Golden.
Yeah. May I just clarify something real quick?
Please.
So, Dr. Prohmutter, as we did speak briefly, but if you remember, I told you I wasn't sure exactly what the conversation was, because it was so long ago. Right? That's why I didn't pinpoint anything. So, just clear that up. I did not, that was not a thing. I, since these past six weeks have gone by, since I've been promoted by the council to interim chief, I would like to clear the air on a couple of things, if I may.
Please.
First and foremost, I want to thank the public support since I've been in this position. It's been overwhelming, and I am very grateful to be your interim chief as of right now. That being said, I do realize there's been lots of questions as to why I am not permanent. I would just like to say, like, I believe I told some members of council, I personally will not sign a contract until the men and women under me in the CBA bargaining unit have a contract. Okay? I personally will not sign anything until I know going forward that the men and women underneath me are taken care of. Council has been, each and every one I've got to spoke to during my tenure now, they all have been great and very supportive of the PD and the members of it. So, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for that, and for making my time easier with Borough Manager Paula Johnson, Wes Fouracre, and Patty Sargent. All have been very great during my transition to this position I'm in now. So, please, I understand that there may be some differences, and that's okay. But please understand that the department is running strong, and everything is going very well. Thank you.
Mr. Hofelder, please.
Hi. I want to follow up on what we discussed a few meetings ago about the damaged curbs, and the solicitor was supposed to get back to me about it, because I don't know if you can still go after the current contractor, because I know you have a new one coming in October, because they're really damaged. And I heard that the one on College Avenue, somebody actually reported it last spring, and that's still damaged over there. And it's, like, that's not my responsibility. I'm responsible for the sidewalk. I'm not responsible for the street and the curb. So, I just want to make sure that it's on the record, nobody's forgetting about it, because it's getting worse. It's, like, slowly crumbling away because that plow hit it so hard, it just pulled the whole thing apart.
Thank you. I don't have an update for you this evening. I can follow up with our solicitor.
And my other, okay, one other thing about the house next to me, that's also, nobody's been there for a long time, 21 Cadwalter. And I saw that a crew came and cut the grass and everything today. So, I'm assuming it's because of Harvest Day. So, it doesn't do any good to send mail. There's mail falling out of the mailbox. Nobody's been there for months. The last time I saw anybody there was several months ago, when they were bringing cabinets in or something. The place is completely abandoned. And I was actually cutting the grass over a lot, because it was getting high, and I actually thought I saw mice or something walking by, so I figured I'm going to keep it short, and I don't want to look at it either. So, it's got me a little concerned what's going on there.
Thank you so much, sir. If you could also follow up with an email so that we can respond to your request.
I'll send one an email.
I would just ask, and I want to make sure council agrees with me on this, that any addresses that have been mentioned this evening and stated as vacant be not included in the minutes, because I don't think we want to publish a document that says-
Yeah, I'm concerned about somebody breaking in there, too.
We have these vacant buildings in the borough. So, just want to make sure that I'm not accused of redacting that or anything like that. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment this evening? Ma'am, please. Welcome.
Margie Baker, 31 Look Over Lane. Just two quick things. First of all, I loved receiving the email this week, the reminder and all that stuff. I thought it was great. So, yay.
Thank you.
And the other thing is, I think I read in the May 20th that the short-term rental was approved and, you know, put into, great, thank you so much. My question is, is there a list available to the public that lists the addresses that are considered short-term rentals and/or grandfathered in?
I don't have a list. Manager Johnson, do we have a list?
We don't have an actual list. So, the short-term rentals could only be in the commercial district. And there is two, two that were grandfathered. And one is on Afton Avenue, and the other one is on Canal Street.
So, the ones that are grandfathered are actually in the commercial, or business commercial?
Yep, they're within the district. Yep.
Okay. And then, there's a limit of 10?
Yes. And we've received zero applications.
Okay. Okay.
And that's all that information is, as it's received. It's just, it's publicly available. It may not be published on the website, but you can come to Borough Hall and get that information on which ones are, if it ever happens.
I've heard different things, and so, I was a little concerned about the-
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's a fair question.
Okay.
Appreciate your comment. Any other public comment this evening? Sir, Mr. Ravina, please.
Frederick Ravina, 35, South Main Street. I would like to ask council to take another look at this police transition committee. I think that it's clear that the public is not in favor of getting rid of the police department. I think Mr. Markey made some excellent suggestions administratively, and some good questions that he posed. And I think with the rocky start that Ms. Thompson started this brings a lot of confusion to the pub, to the public, okay? The public isn't stupid. We hear what you say. We understand what your intention was, and we do not like it. So, I think that it's probably important that maybe council thinks about bringing this back to the agenda and taking a look at where this committee is going. And again, like I said previous meeting, I don't believe that this is a transition committee. I think your purpose is a financial exercise. And I think that word "transition," even though you've tried to pivot what that meant, we know what the intention was.
I don't mean anything by the name of the committee. It was the same name of the committee that we had 12 years ago. I didn't invent it, Mr. Ravina. I know you like to claim that everything's my fault, but the committee was the same name 12 years ago, when I didn't even live in the borough yet. And the word "transition" refers to the transition between Chief Kelly and Chief Golden. We are in a transitional period as a force.
I, I, I think that you're a little full of yourself to think that I do that. I just bring up your missteps. You know, I've been very clear to you, both personally and in public, when we had other meetings, when you've lied. So, I think that the transition, like you mentioned in your original draft from Lower Makefield Township, that's what I'm referencing.
I invite everyone to review the records and all of the documents on their own and come to their own conclusion. As you said, the residents of this borough are not stupid, and I do not think they are stupid.
No, they're not.
And so, they will review them for themselves. Thank you.
All right. So, that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Have a, thank you. Thank you for your comment.
May I ask a question? Just, just to, I just want to clarify, you're suggesting that the committee be disbanded, or you're suggesting the committee be renamed, and the part that is about outsourcing be kind of eliminated? I'm trying, I'm going to get, trying to get a better sense of what your suggestion is, just so I can-
My, my original comment before Mr. Markey was that, but I think he brings up a better point that you yourself are going to be in transition very soon. So, you know, he did bring up some valid points about Mayor Hardy, you know, and whatnot, you know? So, I think that as a body, you should probably have that conversation. That's all I'm saying. And, and I don't like the name either, but, you know, it is what it is. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment this evening? All right. Hearing none, I will close that portion of the meeting. We'll move on to consideration of the consent agenda dated September 16th, 2025. It includes approval of minutes dated September 2nd, 2025, certificate of appropriateness 25-2345 East Afton for a sign, an event permit for Spirits on Main Ghost Walk, Main Street on 930, and various dates in October. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, president.
Please.
May I have A and C removed, please?
Sure. So, we will take each item on its own. We have disassembled the consent agenda. So, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes dated September 2nd, 2025?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by councilperson Shear and seconded by councilperson Siegel-Morris. Any discussion from council?
Yes. In the engineer's report, it says Mr. Applebaum asked the Yardley, about the Yardley Inn project. The Yardley Inn will come back before the planning commission with revised plans for the project, based on findings of damage to the building requiring changes to the project. And yes, that's factual, but it's not, as another person had mentioned, it's not fully fleshed out, because what I actually also said was that I was surprised that- fleshed out because what I actually also said was that I was surprised that they were interested in having the Yardley Inn demolished. And I think that's an important part of my comments.
So I think that this, at this point, a committee of council, likely community outreach, would need to take forward a recommendation to council on whether or not we want to make substantive change or reporting the minutes. No direction or change has been given to our recording secretary, so they are going to be continued to be drafted in a summary format as we have been doing for the last 10 years. So I will, I know Jared isn't here this evening, councilperson Stump, but does that make sense to assign that to community outreach for them to look into and provide a recommendation to council?
Was that a consensus?
No, I'm asking a question like, does that, is that where we want to go from here? Because if council doesn't.
I'm not asking that. I'm just asking to reflect my comment, that's all.
Well, so if council does not take, make a decision on a direction for our recording secretary, she's going to continue to operate as she has. And I think the issue that arises here is we have different speakers providing their own. I want it to be reported this way, which I don't think is efficient to do it that way.
I think it's that you're making a really good point and I think that why not give it to community outreach to take a look at and see if there's a better, because we have new technologies and it's the last time this was looked at. So maybe that's a good way of handling it. You're community outreach, what do you think?
What are you asking community outreach to do?
So community outreach would provide a recommendation to council on whether they are not, they want council to change how we're reporting the minutes to the community or the business record of the borough. So do we want to make them longer like Lower Makefield does? Do we want to keep them short like some other burrows do? But I just want to make it clear to everyone that we're going to keep having these discussions until there is a formal decision made by council to change the guidance.
Potentially change somebody's job description, is that what you're saying?
No, so it's not.
She listens and she records. So what are we last?
So it is not Mary Ann's job description to draft the minutes in a certain way. She just has continued to draft them the way that the previous recording secretary drafted them. So if we as a council want to start reporting our minutes differently, and that's going to involve some back and forth with our solicitor.
It's going to be back and forth. It's going to be a lot more expensive, too, I think.
Well, these are things that, these are things that community outreach needs to consider and come back. If we want to do longer minutes, it might be more expensive. So those are all things.
Okay, I can do that.
I'm still at a loss because earlier in the manager's report, it says Mr. Applebaum suggested selling old signs as a fundraiser, and which was a statement I made. So why can't the statement that they wanted to demolish the Yardley Inn not be included? I heard what you said, you don't have to repeat yourself. I'm just at a loss why in the manager's report, it has a more detailed piece of information about what I, how I quote it and not in the engineer's report. That's all I'm saying.
I don't know because I didn't draft them, but I think it depends on the length of the statement that was made. If you speak for two or three paragraphs that summarize versus a quick comment is quoted. That seems like how it goes, but I don't know. So we can make changes to the minutes if you would like to propose we make a change this evening. And then going forward though, because I'd like us to be happy with the minutes that we are, we are getting from our employee. And I want her as an employee to have clear guidance from her employer.
I think she's doing a great job as an employee, but I think the issue of looking at what guidance we want is worthwhile and I will throw my two cents in there through last time for community outreach to look at, which is, I think you can save money and do a better job by actually making the minutes. Can I just finish, please? Making them shorter and then including a free transcription that is digitized and disclaimed. And that's what I believe the solicitor is going to look at. So I'll leave that with you, but I think everybody can be happy if it's.
I don't think anybody will ever be happy. No one will ever.
Maybe.
You're never going to get everybody here.
I'm an eternal optimist, so.
So we have a request this evening to add an additional sentence. Are there any other changes to the minutes? Does the initial person who made and seconded, you okay with that change? So we will be voting on them with the change adding that sentence that Mr. Applebaum has provided? Any other changes this evening? All right, hearing none, all, oh, sorry. Any comments from the public? Mr. Marky, please.
I'm not sure what the issue is here, but this is something that could have been handled with Roberts. If a member asks to make a correction to the minutes, it's either taken under as unanimous consent or it's voted on as an amendment. It's a simple thing. There's, this is read Roberts rules and learn how to run a meeting, frankly. That's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I share something.
Sure, please.
I appreciate that you're giving us this space to have a conversation because one of the, one of the issues is that we can't meet outside of these public meetings, so we don't get a chance. So we try to squeeze in little ways to improve things and that's an opportunity we had to, maybe we'll improve the way this is done in the future, so.
I think for me, as chair of the meeting, if some, if a habitual request is being made, meeting after meeting, it deserves some time to talk about it. Do we want to change our process, which we just did? And now we have a action plan. So if there are no other comments from the public?
You may not be aware that Earl Marky is a parliamentarian. He is very familiar with all the rules, certainly more than you, Caroline Thompson. It seems to me the issue is not as much the length as the accuracy. They're being misinterpreted. When you have someone shortening things and not putting in substant, one word, like you said, can change the whole context. So it's the interpretation is changing the intent and there seems to be a bias that anything that you say is quoted exactly at length, but when other people criticize you, look at any of the minutes. Anybody criticizes you, it's edited out and they just say.
That's inaccurate. They are not edited out.
They just gave their opinion. It just says gave their opinion. So there's no consistency, there's an absolute bias towards you. And it's simple enough, what Councilman Finer is saying, we have technology that can absolutely give a whole transcript for free. What is so difficult about just doing that and putting it as a link next to the minutes? That would solve the problem.
Exactly, which is why the committee is going to look into this. Thank you, Dr. Philmer. Are there any other public comments this evening on the minutes? We're still on the minutes? Any other public comment on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Certificate of appropriateness 25-2345 East Afton for a sign. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Applebaum, seconded by councilperson Carlson. Discussion from council first? Discussion from the public? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Finally, we have an event permit, Spirits on Main Ghost Walk, Main Street, 930 and various dates in October. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Scherer, seconded by councilperson Finer. Discussion?
Yeah, just for clarification, since I'm the one who asked for it to be removed, I just want to make sure I have the application in front of me. Sorry, that's the wrong one. Okay, so the one that's Spirits on Main Ghost Walk, which Ms. Corsi talked about earlier, I believe, Valarious Productions LLC. Okay, so in this application, and I'm just trying to find it, it talks about how many people, and I believe that's 25 at maximum, is that correct? I'm just trying to make sure I'm accurate. And my question is for clarity, and that is, if it's only for 25, then I don't recall that that is an issue for a poll on the permit. But secondly, it's interesting because this one, like those that the Historical Association does, I'm not sure, do they poll a permit for their walks or anyone else? Bird Walk or anything else?
No.
No. So why, and I'm not challenging anyone, I'm just simply asking for clarification. Was it necessary for them to ask for this, put this permit through?
I believe so.
Yes, why?
Because there's 25 people that could be walking the streets, just as a safety thing. So you guys know what's going on. You know this group of people are walking around.
And just for clarity or clarification, then the people at the Historical Association, Bird Walk, and anyone else that's doing a walk that may have 20, now it's 25? Because it used to be 50 for, correct or am I wrong?
This is 25 in this application.
No, no. What I'm asking is, I don't recall 25. I'm not, you know, here, I'm not trying to challenge anyone. I'm simply asking, was it necessary? Yes, I'm glad that we know about this event and I do understand for safety's sake, but is, was it necessary to pull, simply for process? I just want to know.
We don't know whether or not this was a required permit or if it was submitted preemptively by the event sponsor. I do know that when it's a recurring event, that sometimes that that can trigger things. And remember, we don't have our special event permit passed through yet. It's, it just came back from Planning Commission. So we're operating off of the pre-special event permit guidelines, which are not well articulated. Mr. Finer, did you have a comment that you were going to make? I thought you did. So yeah, the recurrence might be why, but I don't have the context on whether or not the office required this or if it was submitted via download from our website. That would be something that we would have to ask Mr. Foraker.
And just to be, you know, again, just to state, I was, I'm not challenging anything. I simply wanted to know if other people are doing something with this, should they be aware that they have to pull a permit? That's all. And if we don't know tonight, I understand, but I would like to find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council on this? From the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. You have before you the finance report dated September 16th, 2025. Any issues or questions? Otherwise, it will be accepted by consensus. All right, general government, we have with us Mr. Esposito this evening, who will handle the settlement agreement item, please.
Council has in front of it for a consideration, a settlement agreement and release between the Borough of Yardley, Paula Johnson, Caroline Thompson, and Earl J. Marky III. The settlement agreement is related to a complaint filed by Mr. Marky in the U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, naming the borough Ms. Johnson and Ms. Thompson as defendants. The parties have negotiated a settlement that's outlined in this document. If council is so inclined, it can make a motion to approve the settlement agreement and instruct the borough employees to carry out the terms of the settlement. If the council does approve such a settlement, I will make a statement related to the settlement agreement afterwards.
Do I hear a motion to that effect? Motion was made by councilperson Segal Morris, seconded by councilperson Scherer. Discussion from council? Discussion from the public?
Is there going to be another opportunity after he makes his statement? Or is he going to make the statement now?
This is public comment on the agenda item.
Well, I think there needs to be more information. For example, this was a federal lawsuit regarding Caroline Thompson and Paula Johnson censoring, taking down a Facebook post. And a federal judge ruled that you no longer, ruled in this case about, I'm sorry, I can't think of the expression now, but the point is it involves censorship. This started three years ago and you implemented another policy where if you go to the Yardley Borough Facebook page, now it says limiting comments, which is just another censorship. Now you're deciding which comments, somebody's deciding which comments are allowed and which ones aren't. So that's even more censorship than you just taking down comments you didn't like. So I think that this really needs to be addressed. You're either going to limit free speech or you're going to allow free speech. So why is there no comments on the YouTube channel? That's not allowed. The Facebook page, like I said, they all say limited. And anything that's ever allowed is always positive. No critical remarks are ever posted there. I'd like to know who's doing that. So this was a big embarrassment for Yardley Borough. It was in national news. It's a disgrace that this was done. And there should be some kind of, something should happen here. I think that council should vote to remove Caroline Thompson as president. This is no small thing. This was literally national news and it set a precedent. So it's not, and actually, the amount could have been a lot more, a lot more. The only reason it wasn't was because of Mr. Marky not wanting to punish the town because of what they did. So I think it needs to be, we need a policy about free speech and you should not have a president of council who has censored free speech, has provoked these kinds of lawsuits. And from the way she's been talking tonight, she's probably going to provoke a lot more lawsuits. So this needs to be addressed with both the manager and with the president of council.
Thank you, Dr. Philmer. Any other public comment this evening?
Yeah, I actually read the 25-page opinion from the federal judge and it upset me. In fact, today I just put in Yardley and First Amendment and all your names come up. So that's going to be out on the internet forever. It's embarrassing that, you know, Yardley is seen as a censorship. And the other thing that was really significant about this case is that the judge ruled that both you and manager Johnson don't have qualified immunity. So you could have actually been, if Mr. Marky wanted, he could have actually forced you to have to pay money to him, but he didn't. So, I mean, I think this is a pretty serious thing and I think that council needs to take some kind of action about this. And there is a precedent for this back in 2018. The Borough Council voted out Michael Ruttle as council president for a similar situation. And interestingly, council, you, councilwoman Thompson was one of the ones who voted to oust him as council president. So I think that council does need to take some kind of action. This is not a small matter. This is, you swore an oath to uphold the Constitution when you took your oath to office. And I've been, I've been asked about this. I've given people copies of the news articles. It was in the Philadelphia Inquirer back on June 28th. It was in the Bucks County Carrier Times. It actually was in some newspaper, I think it was in USA Today. It was all over the place. So I find this embarrassing and I think that some kind of action needs to be taken by council to address this matter. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Hofelder. Any other public comments this evening? If you're, you can do your statement after or you can do it now, whichever you prefer. Mr. Marky?
I just wanted to.
Do you have to vote on it first?
I just wanted to add one thing to address what Dr. Philmer said. A municipality, from what I understand, what I've read, and the solicitor can tell me I'm wrong, but municipalities are not obligated to turn on commenting. I just wanted to give that factual point. They also ask for a social media policy, which we have. I believe that you were instrumental, Madam President, as well as the general government to, you know, work on that. as well as the general government to, you know, work on that. I know that it was embarrassing for you and Ms. Johnson. And, you know, so I think it's time to finish this and move on.
Yeah, just one, one question about also regarding Dr. Perlmutter, the, and the no comments thing. I know I heard at one point, I believe counsel person Stubb mentioned favoring allowing comments. And I wonder to what extent. I don't remember, maybe I wasn't on counsel, when that was looked at to decide to deal with. Because obviously, when you allow comments, you have an issue of, now you have to be careful of comments that are hate speech and deal with that somehow. But I just wonder if this is another one that. If it was already looked at and that's where it landed, that's fine. But if it wasn't really looked at, and it was just kind of like, okay, this is a fail-safe, no comments, maybe we should put that to community outreach also. So just review and see, do we want to open all of our postings up to allow comments? And how would that work?
Yes, the social media policy that we enacted was drafted by our solicitor based on prevailing social media policies for other municipalities in the area.
So that, that includes the comments being turned off?
Correct.
Okay.
Just to follow up what you said, Mr. Feiner. There are some instances, and I'm not, I'm not a necessary proponent of opening up commenting. I don't know if it's really necessary because we do have a council meeting and committees and commissions and so forth. But if the comments are, you know, profane, or there's threats of physical harm or hate speeches, you mentioned, or even spam or commercial interest, based on what I know, you can remove that. But do we want to be in that position is another question. And that's why probably I'm not a proponent as Mr. Stubb is. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? So we'll vote. Mr. Esposito now? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All abstained. Motion carries 501.
I'm going to pass down the signature page for, it's to be executed by Borough, by Ms. Johnson.
Pass it down there.
If you don't mind, and I'm going to read the statement that was agreed upon amongst the parties. I would like to announce that Yardley Borough has reached an amicable settlement with Earl Markey in the federal lawsuit Markey versus Thompson, case number 22-4307. The settlement is for payment of $2,500 to Mr. Markey and requirement for Yardley Borough to make this statement during a Borough Council meeting. In 2022, Mr. Markey submitted a comment on the Borough's official Facebook page regarding a ballot measure, and that comment was subsequently removed by Borough officials. The Borough and Mr. Markey have agreed to resolve the lawsuit without any admission of liability. The settlement agreement is public and will be made available upon request under the right to know law. I would like to thank Mr. Markey and our legal advisors for working collaboratively toward a productive resolution. Yardley Borough reaffirms its dedication to fostering open dialogue and protecting everyone's First Amendment rights in Yardley Borough. Having said that, Mr. Markey now has the opportunity to make his own public comment on the settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. I encourage counsel the outset to have robust debate and allow robust, robust debate on all forums. Tomorrow's Constitution Day. And I'm going to be spending my day down at the National Constitution Center because, because I, as a citizen, as someone involved in the, in public life, believe that our Constitution is, is important and is still alive today. But lots of things happen. Lots of people say things that aren't very nice out there. And that's unfortunate that they say those things. But they're still protected. Someone could come from, from behind me and say the most disgusting things about me right now. And you know what? Honestly, I'd be happy if they did. Because at least we have this system. What happened here was what's called viewpoint discrimination. It was a technical term or what, or non-technical term people would call censorship. And unfortunately, the course of action was to hide behind qualified immunity. And we had to go through and have a federal judge decide that, that qualified immunity didn't apply here because it was clearly established law. I hope, as public officials, particularly the two officials principally involved with this, might reflect upon this. And in their future decisions, whether they're in public life or not, might be guided, or at least having learned a lesson from this. I'll be donating the proceeds to nonprofit organizations. And again, I encourage everyone to do the same. Be reflexive, have a reflective moment tomorrow as it's Constitution Day, and think about what you can do to respect others, but also respect even words that you don't like. This is our system, and I'd, I'd take it over any of the other alternatives. And I hope you'd all agree to the same. That's all I have to say. I think that this is a good way to put this matter to rest.
Thank you, Mr. Markey, for your thoughtful and respectful comments. All right, and Mr. Esposito, I think the signature page is down there, and you're free to go unless you'd like to stay.
Do we need witnesses to sign this as well, right?
I will, I will.
All right, now the fun stuff. Our year-to-date 2025 financial results and current forecasted performance for the balance of 2025. Mr. Carlson.
Okay. Can you pull up the PowerPoint, please? Okay, just to remind everybody, the way we did the 2025 budget, and then I'm going to comment on how we've been doing against it. Basically, a year ago, you know, as the budget was coming together for 2025, what we did is we looked at how we were doing in October '24, how we thought '24 would end financially. And then we saw the need to have a 2 mil tax increase, which was, which increased our tax rate by 2 mils to cover the expected cost increases. So one of the things that we did, and the reason it was only 2 mils, is because we did a very good job in 2024 and ended up having 100. We projected that we would have $172,000 of funds from '24's favorable performance that were going to help in 2025. So now we're in the same position a year later. I'm going to comment on how we did against the '24. And I want to set you up with how much I think we're going to have in carryover funds available for us for 2026, based on the 2025 performance. First thing, there's a couple of things I want to talk about. The first is real estate transfer tax. Next slide, please. Oh, okay. The reason I want to talk about real estate transfer taxes is because it's one of the variables, it's one of the incomes that we get in that are variable based on what's going on in real estate, how much the property's turning over. And unfortunately, you know, the rest of our income is primarily from the tax base, which is very fixed. So, so we have to guess each year on real estate transfer tax. So when this analysis comes up on the screen here in a minute, you'll, you'll see where we're, where we are.
Are those pictures of the new computers you're proposing about?
Yeah, right. Okay, next slide, please, yes.
Next one.
That one. Nope. Right there. Real estate transfer tax. On the left-hand side of the screen is how the real estate transfer tax came in month by month into 2024. And you'll notice at the end of '24, we had a nice little spike. And we ended up with a very strong November and ended up at 122,567. So we were very close to what we projected last year, for the end of last year. On the right-hand side are the, are this year's amounts. Now, we got off to a slow start. When I gave you an update back in April, I was nervous. But things have changed around significantly. We've had some, some pretty big sales. The shopping center was a big one. And so right now, we're on pace to be, I'm predicting we're going to be 10,000 above. We're going to come in at 110,000. But if we really, in the last three months that we have here, if we really go at the same pace we've been year-to-date, we may end up as much as 117,000 above. So, so that's good. So transfer, transfer tax this year is good. Now, when we meet on October 7th is when we're going to really talk about the 2026 budget. So that's when we'll get into all 2026. But on, on this line item, we're probably going to look at similar numbers for next year. Hopefully, interest rates will come down a little bit, and some people who are not buying houses this year will buy next year. But we will be conservative again. Move it, move to the next slide. I only have two more slides. I'll be fast. I want to talk about two things. I want to talk about revenue. That's what I was going to talk about on this slide. What are our revenue sources? How did we do at the end of '24? Because remember, that was key in our budget. How are we doing so far through August? And what's the current projection for the whole year? On the tax revenue line, you know, which is regular tax revenue occupation, per capita tax, business tax, we ended up about five grand less than what we projected this time last year in 2024. And year-to-date, we're, we're down about 29,000. Now, we're going to get more coming in here in the next three months. So I think we'll probably be about accumulated 10,000 down for the year. That's primarily driven by, it's not that the tax delinquencies are going up, but people have gone for reassessments. The assessed value of the property has, has gone down a little bit. And that's the disadvantage of being totally built out. So that's a little bit of a headwind. Real estate transfer tax, I talked about, it came within 1,000 last year. And I'm projecting at least 11,500, well, 11,500 favorable right now. I'm projecting at least 10,000 favorable for the year.
Ask you questions?
Yes.
Just to, I just find that really interesting. Maybe I'm going too deep down a rabbit hole. But real estate transfer is above. It looks like it's going to be above.
Of a transfer tax, yep.
But, so that means that, and the occupancy taxes per capita, those are very low. Businesses, you know, so it's obviously, the mileage, is it all from reassessments? Is there other that many going on? And how are people getting reassessments that are winding up lower when the values have gotten so much higher?
I'm assuming it's because of reassessment. The county tells us the number every month. Here's your, your, your number. And.
I just don't understand how it could be collecting less. That's what I, and a lot less because if the real estate transfer tax is higher, this is.
Oh, really?
You're erasing that.
No, real estate transfer tax has nothing to do with that tax revenue.
Oh, that's not in that.
No, no, real estate transfer tax, it's a totally separate thing. Real estate transfer tax is the money we get when a house sells.
Right. But that's not our tax revenues, I guess.
It's nothing to do with the cap.
Oh, I see, next line. Okay. No, no, that, you answered my question.
Cable fees came in as predicted last year and a little bit down this year. Interest is a favorable thing. When I sat here last year, I projected that the interest rates, this is the interest we get on the, on funds when they're sitting in the bank. And I thought it would go down to 3% this year, but it's hung in over 4%. We're still getting over 4%, which is pretty good. So that's a favorable line. Police services, this is primarily the services that we do, that we get reimbursed for. And the, and the most significant one is Abram School. So we man that as much as we can. Because of the challenges we've had of getting part-timers in here and obviously being down, full-time guys, we're, we're down in revenue from up there. It's not because they don't want us there. It's because we haven't been able to get enough people up there. So that's going to be significantly less than what we projected this year. We were pretty close last year, but this year it's down significantly.
Is there another side to that one? Like that we're not paying for the hours of those people to be there?
I wish that was the case. But that was the case earlier in the year. Because we were under budget on our part-timers. But now we're all, we're full, we're up the budget on the part-timers. But the issue is, is they're doing other tasks. Obviously, you got Acting Sergeant here, all his time that he's spent before has got to be covered with part-timers or full-timers. So it's making less hours available to go do the services stuff. Unfortunately. Inspection fees was a big surprise in the fourth quarter of last year. We got a lot more in building inspection fees in the fourth quarter last year than projected. It's a little, running a little under through August. But I still think it's going to be a favorable one for the year because we were conservative last year because it was looking, this time last year was looking much lower. Zoning fees, a pretty good projection on last year. This year's down significantly. We just haven't had as many zoning hearing boards. That, you know, that's the fees people pay to go before the zoning hearing board. And we've had, I don't know, we've had several months where we haven't had any, a meeting, you know? It's just, so. Private contributions was up. We, we really don't budget that very much because it's just, they happen for different reasons. And so that's, that's up a bit this year. Licensing, fines, rents, all those came in a little bit up. So they're not, it's not a big swinger. I think it'll be a little bit down this year and some other miscellaneous income. But if you look at the big scheme of things, it's pretty, pretty okay on the, on the income side. We're up a hair. We're down a little bit year-to-date, but we're going to be up a hair by the time the dust settles this year. So that's pretty good on the income side. So now when we flip to the expense side, which is my last slide, now we're talking expenses. How did we do finishing out '24? How are we doing so far this year? And what do we think the full year is going to be? The very first line item is the police department. The police department came in under budget last year by 9,000. And so far is almost 40 grand under and will be 83 grand under. Now, that almost is entirely made up of the fact that since April 1, we have not had to pay the chief salary. So that's where all that savings is coming from, basically. A few other pockets, but it's mostly there. General Government and executive, which basically means the people in this building here primarily, and the offices downstairs, favorable last year, on a good pace of favorability this year. And we'll have a, we'll end the year 10 grand favorable, most likely. Audit and tax collection, we kind of, that's, we kind of missed the boat a little bit. And that's because we have to do a line item audit now because we have some big grants in here. It has to do with the function, the size of the grants that you get, the level of audit that you have to do. And so that's costing us more than we had planned. We hadn't planned to do a line item audit, and we have to do it. So, so that's a 15K issue. Solicitor looks pretty close to what we thought. Right to know requests. We did okay at the end of last year. Our projections came in very close. First half of this year looked good. I'm a little nervous about the backend, but hopefully that'll be some favorability of about 7 grand. Engineering was okay end of last year, but running kind of high this year. It's probably going to be about four or five grand over, might be my guess. Grants, you all remember, we made a conscious. Grants, you all remember, we made a conscious decision last year to consciously, at the end of last year, go over on our grants, take some money from 2025 towards it, which we did. And if we don't do any more grants in the next three months, we'll be back on budget. We increased the budget dramatically last year, from like 15 grand to 28,400. So it was a big increase. Building maintenance has been favorable. Public works, the street lights, that's been okay, plus or minus 1,000, it's not bad. Snow creeped in all of a sudden. We went, you know, three or four years without hardly spending anything out of our snow budget, and that got us to be a little stingy on it, and not budgeting very much. And we actually, it wasn't a real big snow year, but January and February, we had some events. And so, we racked up a little bit. But Manager Johnson tells me, don't worry, November, December, we're not getting any snow. So that's in the forecast.
But she didn't say October.
Only rain, only rain in October, we hope. Subtlety of building inspections numbers, granted, it was down significantly, I mean, over significantly, because of the activity at the end of last year. And so far this year has been pretty, pretty active. Code enforcement and planning and zoning is a little bit favorable so far. Remember, on the comprehensive plan, we had earmarked the 15 grand. We're going to rule that to next year, because they have not gone out and gotten grant money or gotten going on that yet. And then, insurance, after significant jumps last year, but we planned for it. We're much closer in line. So, the net-net says that we're going to carry over roughly 100,000, 101,000 of net income, primarily from the chief's leaving his salary, becoming available, and a little bit on the income side. So while this time last year, we had 172K of carryover, in other words, funds that helped us towards 2025, this year, it's about, going to be around 100.
Does the police department include the bonus incentives?
Yes.
That's in there?
Yes, that's in there. Yep, yep. Assuming those will all be paid out in January, in December. And one lump in December, is my assumption. So yes, that's all in the calculation. So that's where we stand. So the next thing that we're going to do is, at the next council meeting, you know, we've gotten inputs and are rolling up the numbers, and they're big. I'll tell you right now, they're big. And so, we're going to go through and look at this carryover, plus all the projects that we want to do for this year, and where the increases are, and do some trade-offs, and come up with a number that makes sense for everybody. So, that's where we stand.
Thank you so much, Councilperson Carlson and Manager Johnson. I am, every time that you present for us, in awe of how you have transformed the transparency of this process for the borough, that, you know, we're sharing this on the screen for everyone here and at home to see, we're getting down to the granular detail, and we're pausing every quarter to make sure our projections are still accurate, and not just skating on the same thing that we said in November of the previous year. And all of your work, you're in this, you're in this office working together on this every week, sometimes every day, and it does not go unnoticed or unappreciated. So I just want to say a huge thank you from me and all of the residents for this. It's really, it makes me sleep better at night, knowing that it's in good hands.
Well, I apologize, there's so many line items up there, but in reality, there's, how many rows in our master spreadsheet? Just general government, I think it's 240 rows. So, that's the summarized version, by the way. Anyhow, but.
But knowing you, I'm sure you would welcome some substantive inputs or questions.
Yeah.
Will you be available to the next council for just education and coaching, and how to keep it going?
Sure. It's just different approaches. This is the way I do. I just work from the bottoms up, and instead of working from the 30,000-foot view down, that's just the way I do it. But we have a process that, you know, Paul and Patty, each year, the first year that I did it this way, it was a struggle. But they know how to anticipate my questions, they do the whole rough thing first. So you have a process that can carry on. But I won't be far away, if you need any guidance. Okay, any other questions?
Questions from council? Chief Gold, you have any questions? Public, any questions on that?
Now, we do have a rather large cap of all expense, the roof that needs to be done. And I know we're waiting on the LSA, but it's possible that in our contemplations at the next meeting, we would not want to carry that money over, and we would need to, as an emergency situation, spend from reserves and maybe partially from this income surplus this year to replace that. So I just want to make sure that's still on everyone's radar, that we have committed as a council to take that issue seriously and resolve it.
Yeah, so that'll be in the list of, you know, our stuff that we go through that rolls up for 2026. And then we'll decide what to do from there.
I just want to, just for context, this isn't really, I mean, this allows me to say this, but it's not really about this 2025. It's more just taking ahead, is that, you know, these carryovers might seem like a lot of money, but they're really not. Like, it's like, one thing happens, and that's, the whole thing is wiped out. So, the thing I think is important to recognize is that it paints a good picture when you look at this as is, but when you look at how little we really have in reserves, and how many things can happen to wipe that out, or even just that are needed for, like, matching a grant or something. You know, we're really short in that department, and that requires making hard decisions moving forward. So I just think that footnote is important for context.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from anyone? Otherwise, we'll move on.
Just compliment Don and his team. Job well done. Thank you.
You may feel differently at the next meeting.
I'll reserve that next time. No, I'm just kidding.
Don doesn't make the numbers. He takes inputs, just remember that.
Right.
All right, we'll move on to community outreach. We have a presentation this evening, "And Vote to Install a Chimney Shift Tower."
May I introduce this?
Swift, I think it was supposed to say, not shift.
May I introduce the, ma'am president, may I introduce the guest?
Please, Council President.
So I wanted to introduce Julie Passini, a, she's not a voting member of the EAC, but a valuable contributor, and very knowledgeable and engaged with birding, as you know, from the Birdtown initiative that went through. She came to, you know, she comes to the EAC meetings, and came to me, and talked to the EAC about the possibility of installing this chimney swift. And she's going to give those details much better than I can, but I did want to thank her for being such an, you know, playing such an important role. And thank you for bringing this to us, and the possibility of voting affirmative on it.
Thank you. My name is Julie Passini. I'm a Yardley Borough resident. Thank you for having me this evening for this presentation. I'll do my best to keep it short. I know it is getting a little bit late. So, thank you, David, for the introduction. In addition to my work with Birdtown in Yardley, I'm also a volunteer with Bucks County Birders. So I work with them to lead trips throughout Pennsylvania and New Jersey, where we're taking groups of people to go look at birds. We also do conservation work through that group as well. You can go to the next slide. Kind of keep moving. This project is kind of a coordinated effort between Birdtown Pennsylvania, the Yardley EAC, and then it's being given to us by the PA Fish and Game Commission. So they are actually providing the tower structure itself. We're just going to be in charge of putting it up. I'm working with PA Fish and Game Commission through an individual named Stephen Car cuff there. He's an avian wild lifer, recovery biologist. And his email address is here. I've provided this presentation to you as well. So if you need to reach out to him, you can. Next slide. So what are chimney swifts? I think this has been kind of the big question that everybody has had. I think we're familiar with some more of our colorful resident birds here in North America. Chimney swifts are a little bit dull, and they're kind of far away from us normally. You're going to see them kind of swirling above the tree canopy normally. They spend their entire lives in the sky, basically, except when they come to roost in chimney structures and building structures at night. So they're, you know, even though they look like bats, they are not bats. I know sometimes that that can be kind of a point of contention with them. They're not nocturnal. They are only awake in the daytime, because they feed on insects in the airspace there. So we call them aerial insectivores. And one chimney swift has been recorded as consuming around upwards of 8,000 insects in a day. So you can kind of do the math, if you have 50 chimney swifts swirling above your property, that amounts to almost 400,000 insects in one day that those birds can consume. Obviously, that's a high number. The unique thing about them, though, and what gives them their namesake, is that they're nesting in chimney structures. They construct their nests of sticks that they pluck from trees as they're flying through them, and then they use their saliva to put them together into kind of like a little cup on the inside of a flue of a chimney. This picture was actually given to me by a Yardley Borough resident. They had chimney swifts in their chimney. They did not know, they had somebody come out to clean it, and unfortunately, the birds were taken out of the chimney. But it's a fantastic photo. It gives you a good perspective of what the nest looks like and what the young look like. Next slide. So, why chimney swifts? Obviously, it's hard sometimes in conservation to kind of get people on board with projects where you have less charismatic species, is what we call it. So we're not talking about, you know, Cardinals or Blue Jays. We're talking about something that's a little less in front of everybody, because you're really not going to see them unless you're looking up, and you have a pair of binoculars in most cases. But chimney swifts are in steep decline. They're declining across their entire range in North America. They're also declining where they overwinter in South America as well. So we're kind of losing them at both points of their migration route, which is very problematic. So here, in the United States at least, we're attempting to kind of mitigate that by putting up these tower structures, by giving them space where they are losing it, obviously by chimneys coming down, or being capped, or being made so that they can't nest in them. And so, I kind of tried to do like a little bit of like, what I call is an ROE on this, which is a return on environment. And so, you know, chimney swifts eat a lot of insects. We complain about having to use pesticides on our properties. If we were to increase the population of these birds and other birds that eat insects in general, and insect populations for them, you know, we're reducing our usage of pesticides by continuing to allow the population of these birds to grow and remain stable. And if you're reducing pesticide use, you're reducing the amount that's going into your water potentially. And of course, you will be saving money by not having to buy as much pesticide for your lawn. And then, of course, this point's a little more nuanced, but having biodiversity in a community, in a space, in like where we live, is incredibly important to the kind of ecological structure of how we maintain equilibrium, like where we live, essentially. So if we lose biodiversity of birds, plant species, and other organisms, that can create problems for us. And we're kind of seeing it in a lot of cases with some of the basin in the canal, and the drought, and the invasive species that are in there. So that all can be problematic when we lose our native species, and chimney swifts are that. And then, of course, if we do a project like this, we open ourselves up to putting it on grant applications. So if we want to get more work like this, this is a shining example of us kind of being like a model community for something like this. Next slide. So, what is a chimney swift tower? It is a 14-foot, roughly hollow structure with a very small opening at the top. It mimics a chimney on a house. So there's a little hole opening at the top, like what would be the flue of a chimney. And the birds will approach it, and then go down into it, and then they cling to the kind of rough walls on the inside of it. The chimney swifts only will have one nest per chimney. So when you see, which you can in the borough, swifts going into chimney structures, either they're, and you see it during the daytime, before like the evening hours, they're either building a nest or feeding young. Only groups of chimney swifts will go into chimneys if they are roosting there during the evening hours or during migration. So like, right now, you're, there's actually organized events in Philadelphia, in New Jersey, usually around school buildings or churches that have old brick chimneys. And they have these events where the public is invited to come and watch thousands of these chimney swifts dive into these chimneys, because they're basically getting ready to migrate. And so, when some species of birds prepare for migration, they do it in groups. There's safety in numbers, and there's kind of collective, like, feeding practices that they exercise as well for part of that. And then, basically, the structures have kind of like either a painted, kind of like plaster on the outside, or siding. I believe ours is going to have siding, so like house siding on it. It's going to be kind of a beige khaki color, with the goal to be to blend in kind of to whatever environment it's going to be kind of placed in. So when they're in a more urban environment, like what we have here, that's what they'll mimic. Sometimes, there, again, there's masonry ones as well, that will mimic a more like traditional chimney. You can go to the next slide. So why should Yardley put up a chimney swift tower? So in addition to the things I've already mentioned, first and foremost, it's no cost to us, so it's, the tower itself is free, and we will be fundraising for any other costs that are going to be associated with it, which I'll go over later. And as I already mentioned, it sets us up to be kind of a model community for others around us. This project is not only being undertaken by us right now, Morrisville, Lower Makefield, I believe Newtown, I believe someone in Upper Makefield, and I know Warranting is also looking to do this as well. But they don't have it done yet. And I would like to say that we may be the first, which would be kind of awesome. And I'd like to use that as a way to then guide them as well, as they work towards this. And then, of course, we've seen chimney swifts here. We've, I've been observing them since I've lived here for the past like 12 years. And most recently, we've observed them going into chimneys in the downtown area. So they are here, they're living here. And again, we, most people don't know that. So, they're not like, what I would say are, anything that is a nuisance species by any means. And then, also, we have a lot of water here, Lake Afton, the Delaware. Birds in general gravitate towards bodies, natural bodies of water. And so, that's another reason for us, I think, as a community, to kind of look at this as something we may want to pursue. We have like kind of an ideal space for it. And to that point, if you can go to the next slide. The tower itself, again, 14-foot, it's about two feet, like, kind of like, it's like, you know, diameter, basically. And it sits on a foundation of about, so it's a four-foot by four-foot by three-foot, like concrete slab, that has these kind of steel supports that sit into that. And I'll go over this again later in the presentation. We're working with a couple different quotes right now, one that's a little bit like more solid than some of the others. But basically, that, there's a hole that's dug, the concrete is poured, and the steel base is kind of like set into it. It dries, and then the tower has to kind of get like erected onto that base with a group of volunteers. If somebody has a crane that we can use, that's obviously, that's, that would be better. We're going to have to kind of figure some of that out, I think, when we get to the, if we get to the phase of putting it up. Okay, next slide, thank you. In addition to the tower, PA Fish and Game Commission is providing us with an interpretive sign. So this is really unique, and I think it also like enhances like what we're doing here. So not only is it, the tower going to be there, but we're going to have signage with it. So it's not going to just be this kind of obelisk by itself. There's going to be some education with it, so that the community can approach it, and then have kind of a meaningful interaction with it, where they are not just, you know, unsure of it. We have, you know, again, information that we're providing to people right next to it. And this sign is 24 inches by 36 inches wide. Stephen told me that it sits on a single aluminum pole, and then it's customized so that it can have Yardley Borough's name on it. Next slide. So, this is the part of the presentation where I'm kind of going to go over some of my proposed locations for this. Right now, and I've been kind of doing this research for eight months now, to try and kind of figure out where this would be best placed. I've talked to a number of people, talked to community members as well last week, and planning commission, and Parks and Rec as well. And we kind of, all kind of came to a conclusion that really, the best place is probably Fitzgerald Field. It needs to be in an open location. It cannot be obscured by trees or power lines. So Fitzgerald Field kind of fits that bill. In addition to that, we own that property, and it's also close to homes and the Borough Center, where we know the birds are actually nesting. So that means that we would have a higher success rate of potentially getting a mated nesting pair in it, which would, that's the goal. nesting pair in it, which would, that's the goal. It's close to the Delaware, and it's mostly undisturbed, obviously, except for a few public events that we can, we can discuss. Next slide. So what I had provided counsel, I think, in my packet was this rendering that I produced of that location. So this location is, if you're, if you're looking at the rendering at the top, you're kind of looking towards River Road from Bell Avenue. So this is on the left-hand side fence that is closer to the Fitzgerald Saunier Funeral Home. I've given you kind of like dimensions based roughly on measurements I took of the fence and how big the fence was and in between the two fences as well that are there, that are in front of those sycamore trees, to kind of give you an idea for like roughly how big it is and how it's going to look in that space. This rendering is going to be a little bit more accurate than my next one because we kind of redacted where we were going to put it before. So you are now looking at kind of a different version than maybe what I had sent you much earlier in the process because of that. This is my ideal location, based on it being kind of out of the way of anybody's house. It's also, again, not in where it could be obstructed by power lines. And then it's close to Bell Avenue so that if anybody does want to come over to it and read the sign that is with it, they can do that pretty easily. If you go to my next slide, I have also some alternative locations that I'm proposing. I unfortunately do not have the detailed renderings that I had for that one for these. So these are going to be a little rougher, I'll just let you know. But this is an alternative. So an alternative would be further down in the field towards River Road, either between the other two sycamores that are close to the funeral home or closer to the private property that is there. But in these options, we would probably have to come out further from the property lines or the fence lines just because of the trees and the shrubbery that are there. I don't like these as much just because somebody is probably not going to have the value of it as an educational piece as much. They would have to traverse Fitzgerald Field, which I don't really see people doing too much, but maybe it would encourage that in the right context. So this is kind of option B. And we could obviously talk about scenarios as well. If you want to go to the next slide, thank you. I attempted to do some really rough, like what I'll call renderings of what I think roughly size-wise it would look like in, in front of like, if you're facing the funeral home from Fitzgerald Field, between the, again, there's a sycamore tree that's there that's not as healthy looking as the other one on the left, and then there's one on the right that's larger. The other thing we kind of have to worry about with putting it near these trees longevity-wise is those trees are going to get huge, hopefully. But that's, you know, time, long periods of time. Next slide. Thank you. And then this is just the second location, potentially over closer to that private property that is on the other side of, that would be like the southern side, I guess, of Fitzgerald Next slide. Okay, so this is kind of getting into a little bit of like what we're going to need potentially and what, you know, I'm going to source from a volunteer perspective and looking for contractors as well that will pour and dig and pour that concrete foundation. It goes over kind of the first estimate that I have from a guy named Joe Crete, whose sign I passed on Lechworth, and I called him because I unfortunately don't have somebody I know that will pour concrete. So that's something I'm kind of investigating right now. And he gave us a cost, which I felt was very reasonable of about, you know, $1,050. I thought that was good for the size of this and what the project was. He was also going to, he also offered to put the sign up as well, which is nice. That being said, we have about $280 right now. So Harvest Day, we're definitely going to kind of try to fundraise and get some money in our pockets a little bit. I know that there's another couple speaker opportunities I'm going to try to do to fundraise as well for that. That's where the majority of the money that we have right now has come from. So we're kind of, we're kind of going at it. But like, in general, like I think, like, equipment-wise, if we have a contractor come in, I think we only need a tarp to cover it while we wait for it to be installed. Everything is basically going to be provided either by PA Fish and Game. It comes assembled, they drop it off, and it sits in the field until we can get it put up. And I think that in terms of, I can coordinate, hopefully drop off with Stephen so that like he could drop it off around the time the concrete has been poured or will be poured. So it won't just be sitting on its side for a long period of time. And then, obviously, the big thing, I think, that I was concerned about that I was told is not as big a deal as calling the Call Before You Dig number, like we'll obviously make sure that we do that as well when we get closer to needing that. Next slide. Timing. So PA Fish and Game has this project running on a grant, and they only have that grant for two years. They are in their first year. So if we're going to do this, we have one more year to do it. Stephen would like to get the tower up before the birds arrive on their breeding grounds, which is here, next year in April. So that would be the goal. So it's about a two-day install. He told me, obviously, it's going to be one day for our concrete pour and for that to dry. Fingers crossed. It might be a little longer than that, depending on conditions. And then a day to hoist the tower onto the base and attach it. So, next slide. And then, of course, just like a house, since this is going to have siding on it and be painted, there's potentially some maintenance that may need to take place with it over the course of the years that it's up. In addition to that, we're obviously going to have to be aware of wasp nests inside of it, so we'll have to kind of keep, be monitoring it for that. I think wasps and squirrels are our two biggest issues with them. And then, of course, like making sure that if the birds do take to the chimney, that old nests are removed at the end of their, you know, migration, in between their migration south to when they'll be arriving back. And then, of course, like I said, being repainted potentially. The only other thing I would say too is like, in terms of education and volunteering, one thing that I plan on doing with it is creating a group of volunteers to kind of come out once it's installed to encourage the birds to check out the tower. And we do that in practice by doing something called playback. So you actually will stand near the tower for like 60 to 90-minute intervals and play the calls of the chimney swifts to get them to kind of be aware of it in their space. So it's a big thing with purple martens. If you've ever read anything about purple martens, it's really hard to get them to kind of go to their nesting sites. You'd usually have to go through a rigorous process of kind of getting them there. So that's it. I kind of tried to get through that somewhat quickly, so I'm open to questions.
This is incredible. We've had very expensive multimillion-dollar development presentations for us that were less well researched and presented. So kudos to you.
I didn't feel I was giving you enough.
I've learned a lot. My personal opinion, we should put it wherever the EAC thinks it would be most successful. And we are certainly, I think, Councilperson Stump offered last time, we would be happy that, I think we could very quickly raise that money within the course of a couple days. Or Harvest Day is great, but if that doesn't go well, we are here as an asset for you. And I'm excited about this. So is the grant available to homeowners as well if somebody in the borough might have good space for it?
Lovely question. I also asked Stephen that myself because when I wasn't sure if this was going to come to fruition, I was like, I'll just put it in my backyard. Unfortunately, no, they're trying, the goal is for public property with this. That is their goal across the state of Pennsylvania.
But there is the possibility, since it's a year left, if this works out, would we want to do a second location?
I can absolutely ask him that.
If the swifts are happy with the first one, would they?
I can absolutely ask him that. I'm sure he would be elated to hear that because this is, this is not an easy thing. It's definitely different, and it's hard, again, to get people to kind of understand why I think it's a priority.
You're talking about eating 400,000 insects a day.
I may be like overestimating them, but I will just say, there's not a lot of times where there's 50 of them in one mass because they're, they're not doing great.
I mean, one mosquito or two would be helpful to 400,000.
Yes, Mayor Hardy.
Just a question. Was the PICO law considered?
It was, absolutely. Yes.
Yardley Borough Trailhead.
Yeah, Yardley Borough Trailhead. Planning Commission was not as, I think, excited about that. They had other things that they wanted to do there. So there's already some things in the works, it sounds like, that they wanted to have that opportunity to use that space for. And
Too many people, probably.
There's a little bit with zoning in terms of it being on a, like in a floodplain there, and it sits a lot lower too. So I think we're running into some complications with that, and that's something we should talk about too still. Paula would be zoning if we feel like we need to do that. That was what I think was the end result with that, is smaller space, smaller footprint. And then where we kind of wanted it was a little too close to the power lines. I wasn't keen on that.
You also mentioned previously that the Fitzgerald Field is conducive to it. And I, you and I both have walked it. We've seen chimney swifts fly.
Yeah.
And the, not the problem with Yardley Trailhead, because I'm sure we could stand out there and play, you know.
Yeah.
But you said that that wasn't an area where they congregate as much as they do when it's closer to.
They're congregating over the borough, like the main town center, because they're, they're roosting in the properties here, so.
May I ask, I'm sorry, may I? So President Thompson asked about, you know, wherever the EAC would be supportive of, and you and I went through there, and one of the other locations, I'm sorry to bring this up, was on the other side. That would have been the southern side of Bell. I, I'm still think that that's a good location, and I understand that we'd have to have more discussions of homeowners. But from what I know and from what Susan Taylor had mentioned last time, it's not a nuisance. So I just wanted to say, I think that should be reconsidered as a possibility.
Yep.
But I did also want to say, what a fabulous, I mean, you beat me to the punch, but what a fabulous job. You and I have been talking about this for a while, and you, really fantastic. Thank you.
So I think just for your clarity, one moment, I'm Councilperson Carlson. We'll vote tonight that we want to move forward if the vote passes with getting the chimney.
Yeah.
However, once you decide, EAC decides, this is the spot, that should probably come back to us.
Okay, so I would just kind of do what I've already done tonight.
Yeah, unless we want to.
Can we just vote for whatever location they decide?
Well, I don't know. I don't, I think it's okay, but I don't know what this other location is.
The other location is
Any of these locations?
Like one of those three.
Across from the other side, or almost.
Like a little close to a homeowner.
But in Fitzgerald Field?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, still in Fitzgerald.
Is that not one of the three? Is that a fourth?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Is that, is that one of the three that was shown to us, or is that a fourth location?
I removed it from this presentation.
Okay, okay, I got it.
Okay. Yeah, so yeah, anywhere in Fitzgerald Field, I think we can vote on this evening, but I thought you were referring to some other
No, no.
Lot of land that I just, you know.
Yeah.
No, Fitzgerald Field is
They're going to put it wherever it makes the most sense and, you know.
Two questions. One, is this a multifamily dwelling? I mean, no, no, seriously. Is it only one set per, or are they like six or seven at a time? How's it work?
So unfortunately, it is one mated pair. They will really kind of deter others from coming in that will want to build a nest there, unfortunately. I think if there's, so for example, like if you look up Kent State University in Ohio, like they built a gorgeous like brick chimney swift tower, and it's huge. And I think that when it's, like you have a little bit of a larger size, you're more likely to have more living in one structure. These are smaller in relation to things like that. So in general, it's going to be one.
Would they leave their nests there and then the next year come back to their nests? Do they rebuild from scratch and be cleaned out every year?
Not usual. They'll rebuild that, that nest normally. And again, because I think that that's nowadays, at the turn of century, when chimneys were taking place, you know, taking, like they were taking advantage of chimney structures because trees were being taken down. These, these birds originally nested in hall, old dead hollow trees. So when those were taken down, they started to take to chimneys. And so I think that like, in general, like when they're cleaned out, like they're not going to return to that nest. Birds in general, outside of like birds that like next in cavities, usually are not going to return to a nest. And this is not technically a cavity. When I say cavity, I mean like bluebird boxes or things that like tree swallows like to go into. Did that answer your question?
My only other, this is just a comment. When you have a four-by-four-by-three-foot slab
Yes.
That's big. I don't think you're putting the structure up the day after you pour the concrete.
Yeah, that's
Concrete needs, often it needs 30 days to set, or it needs a significant period of time to set.
That's good information, and stuff that like, again, I know one side of it, I kind of starting to get more familiar with the other side of it over time.
A lot of heat generated there, and it takes a while for that to cure
Yeah.
Before you put something on. But anyhow.
Thank you.
Contractors will know.
Everybody I talk to, I get different information on about the concrete.
I have a question.
Yes, Michelle.
Sorry. When they're not nesting in the, in the chimney, then it sounds like more will go in there just at nighttime.
Oh, in general, like the hope would be
There's only like one couple in there just at nesting, period.
Exactly.
They're nesting, but otherwise, they could go in there for protection at night.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It's a roosting structure at that point. Yeah, and like during this time of the year, that's what they're using the chimneys in the borough for. So like their young have fledged, I think would say like roughly like probably in August they fledged. So what that means is like the bird, the baby chimney swifts have left their nest and they are now flying. So, and I think that, again, at this time of the year, they're basically going to be kind of starting their migration. So I think like, we've got records, I think like they usually, you're really not going to see too many more of them around until like mid-November. So like, end of October is really when their peak time is to kind of be congregating, to kind of start to, their, their journey south.
Who is responsible? Is it EAC that will be clearing out the nests?
Probably me, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Me and my cohorts of other birders with gloves.
I think Councilperson
Oh, no, Ori, please, if you're
Just, I was wondering about, in terms of Fitzgerald Field and when that's maintained, I don't know if there's pesticides used, but is there anything that we have to look out for to protect them?
Yeah.
What kind of equipment? Just things that we might not be thinking of that we need to give guidance to our public works?
Sure. I mean, I would not, they don't need to change like how they're interacting with it from like a mowing perspective or anything like that. I think that's totally fine. Again, those birds are only going to really be kind of going in there if they have young or if it's like really kind of like at dusk to go into that. And I don't think like they're cutting the grass there at dusk normally. Maybe they are. But I'm not too concerned about that. Pesticide, pesticide usage is a different thing, and I think that that's a really good point to be brought up. I personally don't know if there's pesticides used at Fitzgerald Field, so I'd have to find that out. And then it may be a recommendation to just be, yeah, I'm not sure.
With lawns, people use
They have to use something is when they have to get ground hornets and stuff.
Oh, that's good to know.
Do they do anything to the lawn, like put, isn't there like some weed and feed stuff? So it's weird.
You don't pay. I mean, you
So they just, they're just
Don't pay for that on any of the Borough properties.
Okay, good, good. That's great.
Last question, and then we're going to move along.
Actually, just two comments.
Okay.
So number one, just for point of information, this will be a long-term rental, not a short-term rental, so in case Don was in
Hopefully.
Second point, which I think is really important, as the liaison with EAC, and I do go to all the meetings, is that we approached the EAC in a way that involves collaborative relationships. And even this week, or last week, I'm sorry, we had the Shea Tree Committee Chairperson there, Derek Gilsec, I believe is his name. We were talking about the future tree program and how we, how not, how the committee, the commission was going to get involved. commission was going to get involved. And we, when I say we, forgive me, because I'm talking about the group, EAC, we talked to other groups or committees or commissions regarding their participation. Julie, if you wanted to add something there, feel free, but.
Other groups.
I just wanted to say that because it, we try to be, not just, not for the sake of just being transparent, but also to get the buy-in from those other groups of experts.
Oh.
So that, you know, for instance, the planning commission.
Yes.
I mean, you, we thought, hey, this is a good idea. Why don't we get their perspective on it? Why don't we get the perspective of Public Works and so forth? So I just wanted to say that, and how proud I am of what you're, well, I know you're not a voting member, but of the committee or commission itself, it makes a big difference.
I mean, I have a lot to learn. That's like the biggest takeaway from it, but yeah.
Seriously.
It's been, it's been good.
So I think we're, sounds like we're voting on a location at Fitzgerald Field and to apply for the grant, and EAC to go forth on behalf of the borough and fundraise for this project. So all of those things, do I hear a motion to that effect?
Oh, moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Applebaum. I think I heard also the motion by Councilperson Sherrill. So I'll give her the second, if that's okay, Mr. Finer. All those, or any further discussion? I think we've discussed, but any discussion from the public? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? This motion carries unanimously.
Yes.